Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 7:05 PM. And please join me at the fledge of allegiance.
Fledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like a motion to add a discussion of the purchase of real estate to our executive session. May I have a motion? Mike, second. Marcy, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Okay, we will...
Need a motion?
Yes, now I need a motion to go into executive session. Mike, Marcy, all in favor? Thank you. Hi, everyone. Could I have a motion to return to open session? Mike, Marcy, seconds. All in favor? Terrific. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the First Selectmen's Report. Briefly, COVID, our COVID positivity rate as of last Tuesday was 4.3%. That was an increase from the previous week of 3.88%. On our budget, the general town budget process is moving forward. The Board of Selectmen budget of $53,094,500 shows an increase of $3,620,926. Fire apparatus, which we no longer reserve for, is $2,642,000 of that capital amount. Should the Board of Finance decide on April 5th, when they vote on our budget to bond that item, our budget will show an increase of $978,000 or 1.98%. I want to touch on Eversource in Littlebrook. We are in the middle of mediation on the Littlebrook Road-Eversource situation, and we have another session this week. Tomorrow evening, we will have a virtual discussion, which will be held with residents of Littlebrook and Littlebrook North to explain the town's options through mediation and the possible outcomes of those options. On Frontier, I've mentioned a few times that Frontier is in town laying fiber optic for high-speed internet. They are coming to the conclusion of that project. They should be done this week, and they should be about 90% finished this week. So those trucks will be finishing up, and I thank you and they thank you for your patience. I had the pleasure of addressing the members of the Chamber of Commerce last week. I provided a state-of-the-town update on the status of many things that are happening in town, including the construction projects, the three major developments that we have going on, and some of the smaller ones. I believe there's a lot of excitement happening in town with those projects, and I was happy to share it there. And also, last Thursday, I participated in a panel discussion on commercial real estate development with Mayor Simmons from Stanford, with Harry Rilling from Norwalk, and the First Selectmen of Greenwich. And the participants had many questions about the development in town, as well as why developers were drawn to Darien and what their experience was working with Town Hall. The war in Ukraine continues and the humanitarian crisis worsens. If you're looking for a place to donate, I'd suggest visiting charitynavigator.org for a list of highly rated nonprofits that are engaged in relief and recovery efforts in Ukraine and the surrounding region. The listed charities are highly rated by being financially efficient and transparent in their operations. I'm very happy to report that House Bill 5429, an Act concerning transit-oriented development, did not make it onto the Planning and Development Committee agenda for a vote, and therefore would not be moving forward this season or this session. I did provide testimony on it. It's on our website, and I want to thank all of the residents in town that also provided testimony. And last but not least, we have a town newsletter. I hope you've taken a look at it, and it's a way to increase our communication with our public. You can go onto the town website to read it or to opt in if you want to receive it by email. That's my report. Thank you. Kate?
I have nothing tonight.
Board liaison reports. We'll start with Sarah.
I have two.
Okay.
For the Henley Homes and Royal Committee, we've been meeting every Thursday in advance of the state grant application deadline of June 30th. The committee will be working closely with this board, the Board of Finance, and the RTM for funding approvals. An RFP for an architect has been posted, and it is public. Next, we're putting together an RFQ for a construction manager. Two weeks ago, the committee toured the elementary schools to get an up-close understanding of the current needs and planned changes. The construction will not start for at least a year, but the committee is excited to start this long-awaited project in town. Thriving Youth Task Force met last week. The co-chairs gave an update on the marijuana education campaign. The adult campaign is from March 16th to May 16th, and it's focused on Darien adults. It's an online social media campaign. A campaign focused on how parents can talk to their teens is going to be running simultaneously, as is a student campaign focused on targeting teens via social media. The images were chosen by teens via focus group feedback. And the members of the task force were at the National Coalition Academy for Training. It's a part of the three-week commitment of training required by the Drug-Free Communities Grant, and they will be looking at a community needs assessment to form a community evaluation plan. There are several upcoming events. Chasing Childhood is a documentary that will be shown Monday, April 7th at 7:00 PM via Zoom, and it's also going to be available on the Thriving Youth page. And on May 4th, there's going to be another Zoom focused on mental health and gender differences with Andrew Tepper and Olivia, I'm going to say it wrong, Buchi, I think. So look for those also on the Thriving Youth page. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Mike?
Nope.
Okay. Marcy? John?
The IT committee met on March 17th, and we had an overview from Jeff Adams on how IT works in town. And just to get the committee members up to speed and current with not just the functionality of that system, the key players, but also some of the issues and pain points, as Jeff sees it, since he's the professional that oversees that system. What we're going to do is divide into some subgroups to focus on a few areas. One of them would be citizen service, I think, trying to make sure that we've done all we can to make the town as in tune with the 21st century as much as possible when it comes to citizen interactions. And this could be scheduling, requests, payments, any of that nature, to just have that as seamless as possible. All our kids use Venmo, and it works like that. I don't know why we can't have the town be just as efficient. And so that just is kind of a euphemism for what we're trying to advise the Board of Selectmen on. We're also going to be looking at cost savings and efficiencies, including in-sourcing versus outsourcing. Again, not that we're going to do that. We just want to explore it and try to get as much perspective as possible. And then finally, as I mentioned before, Jeff has already identified a number of issues that he's facing, and we're going to try to do some surveys with users of the system to surface as many pain points as we possibly can with an eye towards maybe addressing those as part of this effort. So I'm thankful to the folks who volunteered there. Extraordinarily talented professionals with a real background in IT, and it's clear from the questions they asked that they're going to add a lot to that discussion. The only other committee is the ARPA committee, and I just wanted to thank the members of the Board of Selectmen for voting to approve the ideas that this board approved and that the Board of Finance approved, 97 to 3, so I'll take that as a good outcome. But I wanted to thank not just them, but everybody on the committee who helped us come up with those ideas, and I think we're in a good spot. That's it.
Sarah, what was the marijuana campaign for adults? What was the date for that?
So the date starts on March 16th through May 16th. The three campaigns will be pretty much simultaneous.
Okay.
I sent the update to Kate, so she'll have it.
Thank you. Is that a new initiative?
It's part of their Drug-Free Communities Grant, and so that's what their focus on the marijuana substance use.
Right, okay. Okay. Next, we have public comment. We have a lot of people here tonight, which is terrific to see. So I would ask that... How do we do this, Kate?
They can come up to the podium. They need to state their name and address.
Yes, so I guess we'll just do row by row.
Sherri Ramsey?
I realized about time again that I was going to speak. I am here in support of the gentleman in the corner who is going to speak.
But Sherri, if you're... Do whatever you feel comfortable.
So I'm here to support the defense of environmental issues regarding the Eversource tree cutting.
Okay.
229 Long Island Road. I have written letters, emails, and I am supporting comments that are coming later. Thank you very much for your work.
Shan Sillsby, I think you're here for...
I just sent you a picture of Sunny.
Hi, I'm Marie Morgan. I'm on Littlebrook Road North, 17 Littlebrook Road North. I've been here before. I've written letters. We have seen our neighborhood tremendously changed in the last few weeks and months, and the tree cutting has been dramatic and significant. We've had a tremendous amount of support in the past and are hopeful that that will continue. We had several meetings where we were all in the neighborhood, but the impact has been truly tremendous, particularly in one area right where Littlebrook Road and Littlebrook Road North meet up. It's, all of the trees completely were removed. It's a wetlands area. There's a brook running right through it. This whole area is a corridor leading into Sellic Woods. So in the spring, it is full of birds, and it's just all the wildlife. And there's typically fox dens, and there's baby foxes coming out, and there's turkeys and all that. So we've seen a greater number of deer in our neighborhood that have probably left that area. So I think there's already some tremendous impact that's going on. I'm very, very concerned about the invasives growing. So we have, the Japanese knotweed will be coming back, and it comes in and just takes over, and that area has wetlands. So I'm really, really concerned, and I would just really like to see a program in place. I would love to see maybe someone from the Beautification Committee to come in and see it as like an opportunity to say, here is what you can do to save like a phenomenal wildlife area, and here's what we can put in, and here's the invasives that we can take care of and do it in a way that does not impact the native species that live there. And then can also go in and plant for us, something that could look beautiful. And I think it could be then like a model for here's what you can do in other areas as well. I'm passionate about gardening. I would love to be a part of that as well. So I just think it's this opportunity where we can jump in and say, here's how we can really show that Darien can be this beautiful, environmentally-friendly place. You know, our house flooded twice during those past storms, so we ended up with three and four feet of water coming rushing through our basement and lost everything. So I'm really concerned with just seeing the amount of trees that are coming down and the talks of more coming down. So I just have to reiterate again, like my fears of that. It's scary to watch. I cannot explain like how fast the water was rushing through and seeing all of our stuff. And we were lucky. Nobody was hurt in our neighborhood, and our house is fine, and it was all just material items. But it really is like a powerful force when nature comes in. And so I just think we really, we have to make sure that we are not having it get any worse. I'm also highly concerned about the visibility to the tracks. We live in a neighborhood where there's our street, and then there's Sellic Woods, and then there's other streets. And I often worry that a young kid might be like, oh, my friend lives over there. I will just run across. So I also really have a lot of concerns about how highly visible the trains are now in our neighborhood. So that's a big fear of mine. I am lucky that my kids are older, but still, I see kids riding their bikes and meeting up, and I just find that so concerning as well, that the safety issue of seeing the tracks and just knowing what, you know, you can be young and not sort of think it through. And that could be a horrific tragedy in our town as well. So those are my concerns, and I thank you all for how much work you guys all did, and you came out. Jamie was wonderful, and she met with us so much, so I hope that that will continue and that we will have the support of the town to keep things safe and environmentally-friendly and beautiful. And I mean, if you have a chance to come out there, like you'll hear the birds. It's just like really a pretty magical, magnificent little pocket of Darien. So thank you for your time.
I'm Deepika Saxena. I'm from 354 Hoyt Street. I'm co-chair of the Darien Pollinator Pathway along with Juliette Kane, who's going to speak after me. As you all may already be aware, trees provide many critical benefits, such as wildlife habitat, air quality enhancement, soil stabilization, noise reduction, and stormwater mitigation through natural flood and drainage control. Trees capture and store ambient carbon in the atmosphere, providing us with the means to mitigate climate change. Today, I'm going to give you three good reasons why we should do everything we can to protect our trees. The first is flooding. As Marie mentioned, it's quite scary when it happens. And did you know that across the country, municipalities have come to understand the value and importance of trees and have begun to integrate trees into building plans as well as stormwater management? According to the EPA, and I quote, "Mature trees provide significant stormwater quantity and rate control benefits through soil storage, interception, evapotranspiration. With larger trees providing exponentially more benefit than smaller trees. Trees have the ability to reduce stormwater that would normally flow directly into the city's storm sewer system," end of quote. Last year, we had two major storms that devastated our town with flooding. Darien is a coastal town, and over the next several years, there will be more storms, which will have an increasing impact here. There will be sea level rise during storm surges and more and more flooding due to rivers rising. The second reason to protect our trees is the heat effect caused by taking them down. According to a recent study at UConn, Darien was singled out as having more than a 10-degree rise in the average surface temperature in the past 20 years, as 10 degrees, more than any other surrounding towns, including Norwalk and Stamford. Researchers believe that the removal of tree cover for development has contributed to this increase in surface temperature. This is corroborated by the Tree Equities Core Map developed by American Forests, which actually shows on the map that the tree canopy is deficient in this area, the area that goes from Norroton to Goodwife Center, essentially all of downtown Darien. As this earth heats up, we need to develop climate resilience by protecting our existing mature trees and planting more trees. Native trees especially, mature trees, canopy native trees provide the most benefit, eight times that of small maturing trees, according to the USDA Forest Service. And thirdly, trees provide food and habitat throughout the year for wildlife, such as birds, mammals, insects, and more. In his book Bringing Nature Home, Doug Talamy, the noted entomologist from the University of Delaware, urges us to plant native trees like the oak trees. Native trees support thousands of different varieties of wildlife. Eversource wants to cut down mature trees that threaten the grid. What will they replace them with? Do they have plans to replace them with native trees? In nearby Norwalk, I was talking to a friend, and she told me they cut down many trees, and they didn't replace them, and the invasive species have taken over. And as you all know, nature does abhor a vacuum. So whenever you cut down these trees, these invasives will take over. Furthermore, Eversource used a chemical called Triclopyr. C-T-R-I-C-L-O-P-Y-R. It's a dangerous pesticide, and they put that on the tree stumps. This pesticide is really dangerous to use in a coastal area because it goes into your, you know, it goes into the waterways. Eversource needs to invest better to protect the grid. Cutting down thousands of trees in Darien and other parts of Connecticut may seem like a cheap and good way to manage the issue, but with trees gone and the earth heating up, the load will be much greater on the grid. This could result in more outages and even fires. Trees are a solution, not the problem. They take tens, sometimes hundreds of years, to reach the maturity needed to provide maximum benefit, and just a few minutes to cut it down. And once they're down, it is final. There is no going back. I mean, I think we all need to... I wrote this because I always forget what I have to say, so I wrote it and read it out to you. But I feel really passionately that we should try to protect our trees. This is nature. Nature has given us these trees, and they help so much in these kinds of situations, whether it's flooding, there's heat, and they're really protective of us. And we shouldn't be in a rush to cut them down, and I think Eversource doesn't think this through. Perhaps it should be something done at a state level, but while we're waiting for the state to take action on this, I think at the town level, we should try to fight this. Thank you for listening to me.
So I'm Juliette Kane, 81 Locust Hill Road. I would just like to mention, I'm co-chair of the Darien Pollinator Pathway, as Deepika mentioned. I'm also chair of the Beautification Commission, and I'm the first person who would be happy to go anywhere and advise on plantings, whether with a beautification hat on or with a pollinator pathway hat on. But I do think it's somewhat outrageous that Marie and others on Littlebrook are in the position of having to ask us to do that as a result of the work of Eversource. While I'm happy to do what we can, I mean, we're limited budget-wise, I think that the situation that's been created is beyond anything. Like Deepika just said, it's a matter of minutes. When the damage is done, those trees are down. We can't restore that to anywhere like the habitat it needs to be. We can patch up, but quite frankly, why should the town be spending money on that? That should be Eversource's nickel. Anyway, Sarah, I'm distracted. Deepika's spoken about the benefits of trees, and everybody in this room knows by now what those benefits are and what the significance and the importance of those trees are. And it's for that reason that the federal government has tree-related initiatives and bills pending in Congress. For example, the Trees Act that would provide funding for trees, particularly in low-wealth communities. There's the Rural Forest Markets Act, and that would create a market for forest carbon and guarantees for investments in forests. There's efforts at the state level, too. There's HB 5116 that would actually require the creation of a fund funded by utilities to restore some of the damage that they've done through their clearcutting. There's SB 323, an Act establishing a municipal tree removal account. It's not as dire as it sounds. That's for removing dead trees, the trees that really need to be seen to by the town. And then there was the Perfect Future Working Group last year that I sat on. That was a policy for resilient forests for Connecticut's future. And we made tree-related policy and legislative recommendations to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And Deepika has mentioned the tree-related initiatives and undertakings by municipalities across the country. But Darien is sort of an outlier here. We have no tree-related policies. We have no laws. We have no regulations that would limit developers or private landowners or utilities from taking down our trees. The rules that we have stem from the state laws. We don't have any ordinance unlike Westport, Norwalk, Greenwich, and other of our neighboring towns. And I walked today with a friend of mine, and she was telling me a story about how her neighbors, she had gone away for the weekend, came back, and the neighbors had taken out 35 trees. 35 trees. Some of them were more than 100 years old. They won't be replaced in our lifetime, but won't be replaced in the baby's lifetime. They can't be, gone. Same with another friend who sent me pictures at the weekend of her neighbor who is going to renovate his house and took down all the trees. You don't need to take down trees to renovate a house. But I've mentioned this before, the Darien Pollinator Pathway has proposals for a tree advisory board and for changes to our planning and zoning regulations that would really allow Darien to give value, recognize the importance of our trees. We'd have built-in defenses to these onslaughts by utilities to homeowners who just want to, I don't know, clear their ground and put down grass. We'd have a holistic solution. We'd build up credibility. And next week, we have a meeting with Monica to go over these proposals, and I really urge the Board of Selectmen to support our proposals. Thank you.
I can't remember the first name. The last name is Olson?
Olson.
Okay.
First name is Keith.
Keith. Thank you.
Hopefully, my public speech, whether my making may be worse. I'm here also, I live at 16 Littlebrook Road North here, also talking about the tree situation. These guys have been much more eloquent than I can be about the trees themselves and the damage done to the neighborhood. What I'd like to say is just how much we're relying on this board to be our voice and our advocate in this entire situation. We're a committed group of neighbors, but we don't have the resources or the influence that you all do. And while you guys currently have big issues facing the town that you're all, or the issues of the day, you're also in legacy positions that are going to be judged by the future. And while this is a situation where these trees, you know, cannot be replaced, I would hope that you guys at least ensure that the plan that Eversource puts in place is reasonable, that it passes muster of experts, and that we can really rely on you and hope that you guys do what the voters put you in to do in terms of protecting the interest of the town. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janine Duarte. I'm at 6 Littlebrook Road with my husband, Joseph Barton. I think that one thing that hasn't... This is not just a town issue or a street issue. This is actually a regional issue and a state issue. These are animals that inhabit those areas that do migrate. So by them clearcutting these trees, it's impacting the whole state. Please don't have any more trees felled until we have a proper replanting agreement from Eversource in writing, if that's possible. Right now, we've had 21 trees in our neighborhood taken down. There's been nothing redone. They're just stumps, and they're ugly. And again, we talked about the void, how these invasives are going to start coming in. We're one of two entrances to Sellic's Woods, but once the Parklands project begins, we're going to be the only entrance. And it's something that our neighborhood takes pride in. But right now, as you walk into Sellic's Woods, the whole drive-in, it's just not what it used to be. And it's very upsetting. So if we could just get a vegetation management program in place, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Allison Costanzo?
I'm not even going to attempt to talk a little today. I live at 31 Littlebrook Road. We're all the way at the end next to Sellic's Woods. I've had a couple conversations with Monica. I'm sure everybody's heard me talk on public hearing many, many times. I put 300 flyers in mailboxes around the neighborhood. I really think we need to hold Eversource accountable. We need a replanting plan that addresses all of our concerns, primarily keeping my little monkeys off the train tracks, noise barrier, visual barrier, environmental impact. Those are three of the main things that we have to offset. So we understand that the trees are going directly into power lines in most areas, but the way that they've chopped off and decapitated all of the trees, it's basically left us with a street full of middle fingers. We have to rectify that. We have to fix that. We need a plan to come up with to fix that. We had a bird watcher that came out the other day. Yes, they've done right there. We had a bird watcher that came out the other day. We get bird watchers from all over Fairfield County that come to enjoy the corridor. They're back. This is what happens at our notice. It's okay. Actually, yeah, don't lose her. What was I saying? Bird watcher. So the bird watcher showed up. We have bird watchers that come from all over Fairfield County, and he got out of his car, and the look, he was in the circle. Our house was right there. I could see the look on his face from my office trying to work. He was in shock, looking at the trees. We have no more treetops. If you go to the top of the hill on Littlebrook Road, I'm not sure if you've been down there in 14, Eversource cut trees where it's shaded, where it once was shaded, and you could hear birds, and it was nice and cool. Now it's hot and humid, and you can't hear any birds. When you go to the end of the street in front of our house, there's a nice breeze. It's cool. There's a tree canopy. Like somebody else said, it is the corridor to Sellic's Woods. That's what we're protecting. So if the trees are an issue, there needs to be a solution in place to... So if the trees are an issue, there needs to be a solution in place to fix the damage that's done. Thank you. And thank you for your help and your attention to this. I'll get my clothes.
Ginger Morgan.
My name is Ginger Morgan. I live at 1 Peach Hill Road, so I'm not on Littlebrook, but I'm passionate about trees. I've been on the Tree Conservancy for over 15 years. It sadly is not as vibrant as it ever was. My boys have done Eagle Scout projects in Selig Woods, and we walk there every other day. But more than anything, I guess, we shouldn't just be talking about Littlebrook, we're talking about five-mile stretch of the high-tension wires. And I grew up in Ohio, and since this has come up, I've been driving around, looking at what a high-tension wire means. It's 100 feet high, and they propose going 25 feet on either side of it. So we're talking about people from Nuroton Heights all the way up that will lose their entire backyards. Selig Woods will lose 100 feet of their property, and we'll see the high-tension wires, we'll see the railroad, we'll see the highway. If you drive through Goodwives, everything in the back of it will be taken out. If you drive along a lot of our highways, there's high-tension wires going along our railroads. And I can't fundamentally understand how much this will change, the shape of Darien for a five-mile stretch. So I just hope that that change will also mean a lot of property values go down, people lose their entire backyards that they bought a house. That house has historically had tree coverage that gave them sound. Every tree drinks 50 gallons of water a day. So suddenly, if you take away 50 trees in my backyard, I'm going to flood. I'm not going to have, I'm going to have erosion, and I don't have the coverage. I live along Mansfield, and we have electric wires. So they are not being proposed to be taken down, but for 25 years, I planted tree coverage. Those trees are now 50 feet high so that I don't have to look at tension wires. And wouldn't it be sad if they came and said that every wire had to be clear-cut 25 feet? So think of what that might do to each of our yards. So Littlebrook happens to be along the high-tension wires, but I would hope that we all take some consideration on if we took all the power line trees down, because that's what it really takes. I know that we're talking about big, but we're talking 100 feet tall. What kind of tree will give you coverage over 100-foot-tall tension? And I drive quite frequently down Littlebrook, going to Selig Woods. I didn't really notice all of the brim, and sadly, now I do. But this will go on all through Selig Woods, all the way down to Nuroton, which will lead to a loss in the beauty, and it will also be like the railroad brim. So sadly, for the whole time that I've lived here, we've been trying to get rid of the invasives, we've been trying to plant stabilization. I have put trees there that have died, I've replanted trees, and without someone constantly watering a tree, the Tree Conservancy put in and donated over 300 trees. Less than half of those are still alive, because unless you have a dedicated person who wants to water a tree every week, that tree will not survive. So when we're talking about these large, vibrant trees, we're talking about what makes our town a lovely place to live. And if we take those out, I don't know who grew up in a Midwest town, I used to ride horses under power lines, but they were taller than this building down to that ground, and now we're going to be having huge swaths of that, that's what we're going to be looking at. So I just hope that we really think fundamentally about the property values, the environmental values, and what the heart of Darien and how it might change. So I know that Eversource may have the right, and I know a lot of what we're fighting is easements, and possibly it is a difficult fight, but I'm kind of proud of Darien for taking what we have done so far. And I hope that you guys have a little bit of the guts to keep that fight going, because I've been proud when I read about it in the Stanford Advocate, and I've been sad when I've gone to Norwalk. And this goes all the way up to Massachusetts, so I know that it's not, it starts at Greenwich, and it goes up. So I know that we are a little town fighting a big fight, but I think it will make a difference. And I think that what we stand for will be those trees, and 10 degrees is like massive. When I heard that, I was doing some other environmental work about our oceans, those 10 degrees affect everything that lives here, and it will change the species, it will change the fish, and the runoff will change the speed at which our roads flood. And I currently can't even get under the railroad trestles. Imagine if now we have five miles of 150 feet across, sorry, I'm not sure if it's 75 feet across, but clear mud zone. So please imagine the mud zone, and unless someone is constantly watering whatever goes in, it's really hard to replace what comes down. And also, if you cut a tree that is massive, it has a trunk that erodes and will ultimately in five years to 10 years make a massive mud pit that, where the tree erodes and goes into the ground. And I don't think they're addressing. I've had Eversource come on my property, and they've probably taken off 12 trees that are this large. I constantly have to deal with those root balls that are eroding into the ground over constant future years. So we're not only talking about today, we're talking about what will be for the next 15 to 20 years and onward. So please stand up for our trees and most of all, our property values and our town.
Dick Polley.
Dick Polley, I live at 1 Littlebrook Road North. I think the real question here is a policy decision by Eversource to eliminate the historic expense of tree trimming. They did this at the top of the hill at the Sotelli property when they cut down pine trees, and they put in the metal effect. And that is what Eversource would like to do. Now, as you go down the hill, about 200 feet from the bridge, Eversource repaired one of the concrete stanchions a number of years ago, and at our request, they came back in, and they planted four or five evergreen trees that are still there, planted by Eversource. What I am asking is, the trees that were cut down were planted approximately 33 years ago. These trees survived. The Japanese knot was there 33 years ago. It's there today. And if evergreen trees are replaced, like Green Giant, the trees will survive. They don't need the maintenance and all the pesticides, and if they put in at the proper height. The trees, the Green Giants come in different varieties. You can buy a variety that grows between 20 and 30 feet. Eversource can come in and trim it at 30 feet. The evergreens in that area will give visibility from the track, prevent the track from being an attractive nuisance, and will grow before. The trouble with the trees planted 33 years ago was the neighbors planted the cheapest evergreen available, the white pine, and so it was never as good a tree as Eversource actually planted. This will give a visual barrier for this section that you now see the track. I'm not looking for a tax reduction. I would like to pay my taxes and not be coming to the town for a tax reduction. And I think, from my viewpoint, the responsibility of the town should be questioning Eversource, deciding that tree trimming by a utility company is no longer an historic expense, that they can maintain, oh, we don't have to spend that, we're going to give a metal effect. And that's, and a lot of this is driven by the fact they've cut back on staff, so there's less people, and they don't want to spend the money, and it's earnings per share. So I think if the town can fight, tree trimming is an expense utility should have to spend. And undoubtedly, there is a few of the trees that need to be cut down, a danger, I won't deny that. But overall, I think I would like, in this one section, Green Giants planted to replace what they took down. Thank you.
That's it, except for people in here for other.
Okay. Is anybody here for general public comment that didn't sign in? No? Okay. All right, so we'll go back to the agenda. Thank you for all of those comments. Thank you for spending your time coming to talk to us. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a resolution authorizing the Board of Education to take certain actions regarding the royal roof replacement. Bye. Thank you again for coming, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So again, discuss and take action on a resolution authorizing the Board of Education to take certain actions regarding the royal roof replacement. And Dr. Adley is here, and will you explain this, Dr. Adley? Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. And I want to thank Kate and Monica for their help with this process and with the processes the whole way through in terms of the building projects. Before you are three resolutions. The Office of State Construction and Grants and Review have, they've gone through some of their own trials and tribulations, and what has served us in the past through this board, through resolutions for the Hindley Homes most recently, is no longer satisfied, satisfying the conditions set forth by that particular office. So in particular, they have come back and asked us to do three resolutions in terms of the royal, to support the royal roof project, which this board has already supported and already passed back in December, December 13th or so. So for the possibility of getting reimbursement, partial reimbursement back in the sense of about $30,000 or so, and to actually have the project move forward, we literally need the resolutions read separately. There are three resolutions before you, they're fairly straightforward, they need to be read in that order, they need to be read out loud and notated accordingly. And that's the, that's the request from the Office of Construction and Grants and Review. I'm happy to answer any questions.
When do you have to have these in?
So the sooner we have these in, the better, because we're trying to get the, we want the roof obviously completed over the summer for obvious reasons. So this needs to go in as soon as possible. I do want to thank Monica for co-signing a letter that I, that perhaps you have in your pocket. Subsequently, the Office of Construction and Management Administrative Services did not do anything with that, even though they requested us to do it, which is disappointing, because we lost about a couple of weeks, and until we get certified minutes back from this board, we won't be able to proceed.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Adley? No? Okay. So I will, I will read the resolution, and I'll ask for a motion to approve. Resolve that the Town of Darien Board of Selectment authorizes the Darien Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of the Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the roof replacement project at the Royal Elementary School. May I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Mic moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion to approve our second resolution regarding the Royal Roof Replacement Building Committee. Resolve that the Royal Roof Replacement Building Committee is hereby established as the building committee with regard to the roof replacement project at Royal Elementary School. May I have a motion to approve the resolution? Mic moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Okay. Unanimous? And the last resolution. Resolve that the Town of Darien Board of Selectment hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the roof replacement project at Royal Elementary School. May I have a motion to approve as presented? Mic moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Adley.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on appropriation bond authorization for the Hindley Elementary School renovation project of $1.4 million. And this evening, thank you, we have Chris Price and David Martin here to explain the agenda item.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. I feel like all I do is come here and ask for money, but...
I might need to get used to that, Chris.
Anyway, we were here a few weeks ago to ask this board to approve a request to the Board of Finance for $102,500 to kick off, really, the studies and the process for the Homes, Hindley, and Royal Building Committee to allow us to do things like retain a grant consultant for state funding, retain surveyors, retain hazardous materials, study engineers, et cetera. That was all, that was done. And now what we are doing is coming and, well, I guess before I get too deeply into it, I assume you guys have gotten the memo that Dave Martin drafted up, which laid out in some detail, so I won't hash it out in great detail. But the gist of what we're asking for is three separate approvals for three separate resolutions and appropriations to go tomorrow night to the Board of Finance, and assuming approval by the Board of Finance, to then be put on the registered town meeting Finance Board's agenda to be discussed and approved as resolutions, to be adopted as resolutions. For, in the case of the three schools, we have it broken down, $1.4 million for Hindley, $1,500,000 for Homes, $1,250,000 for Royal, for a grand total of $3.7 million for us to continue our work this spring to get us to the June 30th deadline, by which we have to have a grant submission to the state. We're having a meeting tomorrow. Dr. Adley's kindly arranged that to get to know the folks at the state, for them to get to know our committee, to learn more about the process. We've hired a grant consultant. They're working to get us, get us moving toward that. We've got an RFP out, as Sarah noted, for architects. We'll have a lot more detail on plans and budgets once the architects start responding to our RFP and generating what are called charrettes, which are, in effect, make-believe plans and budgets as part of their proposals. I'm going to turn it over to Dave in a second to go through the specific methodology of how we came up with the numbers we arrived at. But this is the second of what would be really three requests. The third request we would expect to make is later in the spring, when we come before this board and then the Board of Finance, for what we expect to be the full budget for each of the three school projects. This is really bridging us from the very, very first approval that we got a few weeks ago, to get to where we're able to come and ask for the full budget. So I'm going to turn it over to Dave to go through the specifics of how we came up with the numbers, how we formulated it. Do keep in mind that these are three separate, three separate requests. We've drafted up three separate resolutions that we expect would ultimately go to the RTM.
Folks, so I think if you've seen the memo, I tried to keep it as clear as possible. We had initial cost estimates from Northeast Collaborative Architects from April of 2021. I cannot emphasize enough that the likelihood that the final plans will be the plans that Northeast came up with is slim, right? We are out to bid with architects currently. We'll narrow it to a group of three architects, they'll produce charrettes, and those charrettes have fairly significant cost detail for the designs that they come up with, that should be significantly better than what we have to work with now. But I needed a base to start with, so April 2021 was a good base, was as good as anything for us. And then in working with the administration, they gave us a cost inflation factor of 7.5%. So we applied that to the amount that Northeast had come up with, and then we added the traditional 10% contingency. This is all, of course, broken up by school, because Northeast broke it out, you know, a dollar amount for each of the schools separately. The grant consultant has advised us that we have to run each one as a separate project, because the Office of School Construction and Grant Administration, I've been tied with this for that, is going to want to see each project independently funded, and 100% of the funding has to be in place before they will entertain the grant application, just like it was for Ox Ridge. just like it was for Ox Ridge, which, which you guys all know. So, the one other element of the methodology that I used was I looked at the Ox Ridge project. Their initial bonding resolution that they asked for was $3 million, and their total cost was $63 million. So, $3 million on $63 million is 4.8%. We thought that since this is three separate projects, the architects are going to have to review three surveys, three sets of environmental plans, come up with three separate designs. Rounding up to 5% was not, seemed like a reasonable approach. So, we have done that. And then, when those numbers spit out numbers that went out, you know, two pennies at the end, we just rounded those to nice even round numbers per, per school. And those are the numbers that you will see on the resolutions that you have. Hindley at $1,004,000, Holmes at $1,500,000, and Royal at $1,250,000. All that bearing in mind that we expect to have the charrettes from the architects on May the 9th. And then, that way, we will have updated information for you, be able to utilize those detailed cost estimates to come up with the final cost estimate for the project that we will be back to you for. As Chris mentioned, this resolution will replace the prior funding as soon as it becomes effective, hopefully. And the last request will be an amendment to this resolution to incorporate this and the rest of the full amount.
Any questions that we can address for the board?
I have a question a little bit going back on your grant consultant. Is it the same consultant as Ox Ridge?
No, it's not. It's ONG. We retained ONG. We, we interviewed the same consultant, Colliers, that is working with the Ox Ridge Committee. We got input from the Ox Ridge Committee and taking that, plus the results of our interviews with ONG, decided to go with ONG.
So, is the 102 that we approved before, is that fully funding the consultant?
Yes, because the consultant's a flat fee of $5,000.
Okay. Okay. So, that's all. Okay.
And again, as Dave just noted, the 102.5, this request that we're making this evening would, in effect, override that, would supersede that.
Right. Okay. Any questions?
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I mean, this is fantastic work that you're doing. I mean, there's nothing more important than the school buildings in this town. Everyone walks through them with expectations and probably very few know that it's, you know, volunteers, unpaid volunteers who are putting in all this work, keeping in mind of taxpayer dollars, but also making sure that we have stellar facilities. So, thank you for all your work so far.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I would just comment, I was on the Ox Ridge Building Committee when we went through this process. You absolutely have to have this. It sets the stage for the clarity that we'll need to do the much larger appropriation later, and this is structured in the same way, so I'm very supportive.
Okay. So, if there are no further questions, then may I have a motion to approve the appropriation and bond authorization for Hindley Elementary School renovation of $1.4 million? Marcy moves. Second. Michael seconds.
That was Sarah.
I will, I will start looking over here. Okay? All those in favor?
Jumping to...
I know. I'm sorry.
Who was the second? I don't know.
Mike and Sarah.
Okay. There are others, okay? Okay. Discuss and take action on appropriation and bond authorization for Holmes Elementary. Are there any questions on the Holmes Elementary? Nope? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the appropriation and bond authorization for Holmes Elementary School of $1,050,000?
I'm already giving it to Sarah.
Okay. Sarah moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on the appropriation and bond authorization for Royal Elementary School of $1,250,000. Are there any questions? May I have a motion to approve the appropriation and bond authorization for Royal Elementary School of $1,250,000?
Am I allowed to have a good question about Royal?
Yeah, you sure may.
Why is the roof, I didn't, this, tonight's the first I heard that there was a separate roof project for Royal?
Yes.
Is that, is there any efficiencies to try to wrap?
No, that, that needs to...
No, it needs to happen now.
No, it needs to happen now. Basically, thank you.
Okay.
I need more to do.
No, no, Chris, we're good. We're good. Let them do that.
Thank you.
Okay. So, if there are no further questions, may I have a motion to approve the appropriation and bond authorization for Royal Elementary School of $1,250,000? Sarah moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good job. I mean, we're all the same. We're the sort of, yes, I guess, yes. Good, good, good.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is number seven, discuss content of community value statement. And let's, you know, I think the community value statement should reflect a collaboration among all of us and represent the community at large. I'd like to see a vision statement, a mission statement, and a value statement. And these should be a reference for our actions that we take as a board and as a community. So, we talked about this a little bit in the past, and I'd like to begin by, we were going to reach out to our constituents. We did have a couple of letters which were sent in, which I think what we're going to do is Kate's going to collect all of these. One of the things we want is community feedback. And so, I'm hoping that as a board, that we will go out and search for that, but I'm also hoping that our community will bring it forward to us and email it to us or speak to any one of the Board of Selectmen. So, next, you know, I'd like to open it up and hear what people, what you've heard so far in your outreach on this.
Well, if I can start, I mean, I don't have any content thought at this, at this moment other than I think while we are the elected officers of this government, that it's our responsibility to come out with the final product. But I think it's also incumbent upon us to try to get as much community involvement since these are community statements. So, to try and get as much input from them as opposed to, I mean, I think we're talented folks up here and certainly capable of thinking critically, but I think to be informed from the public how they see this town and how they see the things that we do well and the things that we need to do better and how to incorporate that into a value statement and a mission statement going forward, I think is, is critical. I'm glad to see that we've gotten, you know, some response, you know, tonight. I hope that continues. I hope that we see the same level of interest as we've seen for the ever-source activities for these statements. That would be my hope, and I hope we can all engage in activities that will drum up that kind of attention.
I think, you know, I've had people mention it to me out and about. So, I think, I think the word is out there, and I am hopeful that we will receive a lot of input from the community.
Okay. Sorry. I did a little research, and I found some interesting things. I think I looked at towns from Connecticut, like Windsor, Connecticut, to towns in Illinois, like West Hollywood, to Arizona, to different towns. And, and one of the things I saw is this became a process for the community. Some had town halls, some had small group workshops, some had surveys. But the input from the residents really lent another layer to this that I think would be an enormous piece. I think it, I agree with Mike, we absolutely represent, and I'm happy to get input from people, but I do think to have a community value statement that is reflective of our community, it would be important to have some community input. I'm not sure what shape or form that should take. I, you know, we've done surveys successfully. We've had phenomenal response rates, particularly to the Parks and Rec survey. I'm not sure that community values are exciting to the Parks and Rec, but it would be nice to see some response. When we did the beginnings of this conversation, the community values, there were conversations with Board of Education members and, I believe, Board of Finance members. There were different parts of our community that were involved, and I think those helped to create something that is reflective of the larger. When a company does one, I even found a company community value statement, they gather department heads and managers and their board and stakeholders. And so, I think it is, I love the idea that you're doing the mission, vision, and values. I think that that's very important, and I think it's, that's comprehensive. I was going to suggest that I have seen that on many places, but these are important values to be reflecting on.
Right. I don't think, I think that you need all three in there.
Yep, I would agree.
So...
Marcy?
That we've opened up the table to the idea of doing mission, vision, and value statement. I have done this three times on two different boards and one in private corporation. And every time, we had a professional facilitator come in and sort of guide us because these are big concepts and big ideas. I wonder if that's something that we should consider as part of the process, to think about, you know, hiring an organization that is really keyed in on, and whoever we see as, as, as members of, I wouldn't say committee, but members of, of sort of that working group to be part of that, part of that, you know, facility, facilitator, I think is something we should consider if, if, if we're going for all three of these, all three of these concepts. I mean, the Board of Selectmen is one role, but if we're talking about a community-wide, you know, and I started doing a lot of research and looking at value statements, they were broken up. You had, you know, a Board of Selectmen value statement, and you had a Board of Education value statement, and they were very different versus, you know, what you would see as a community as a whole. You know, when I looked at, I looked up the definition of community value statement, I was getting back, "Community values are non-negotiable core principle or standard that the community residents wish to maintain. They must acknowledge, honor, and constantly defend to ensure that change and developments occurs within these parameters," which, to me, resonated, right? I just, you know, as we're, as we're talking about looking at this as, as, as these three things, I, I would put out there that maybe we should get a facilitator or look into organizations that do this professionally.
Okay. Sean?
Yeah, I guess I would say I've been involved in those efforts too, though mostly in a corporate setting. And the most interesting thing about those exercises was actually not the development of the values themselves, but seeing what impact the development of those values had a year later, right? So, does anyone remember the process? Can anyone find a copy of the values? Did anyone change a decision or do something different as a result of those values having been developed in the past? And so, one of the things that I'd like to learn a little bit about, particularly from some of these towns that have done this work, is to talk less about the process that they came up with. I think we'll come up with our own process. I like the idea that this board leads that process, perhaps with the support of some third parties, but really talk about sort of a year later, what happened in those towns with those community value statements. And let's see if we can reverse engineer something that's going to be effective, right? And there may be some constraints on the development of those values that we're not, that we may think are bad, but that we need to put in place so that those values are actually part of the conversation, part of the town, part of decision-making a year later. And some of those, and part of the reason I've been supportive of something short or something pithy, something sort of tightly defined, is that in my experience, long and multiple-page documents end up on shelves, and they're, they're not meaningful, they're not useful. So, I think that this is one potential example of something we ought to think about, that if we're going to go through this entire process, let's ensure that we have a process that results in an end product that is going to be enduring and used.
Okay. So, we have some things to think about. I think community, well, obviously, we need community input. I think, Sarah, you mentioned a survey, so that would be something to look at, professional facilitator. So, I would suggest that we do a little research on some of these things and come back to you when we have a little more information. How does that sound? Sounds good?
Works for me. Yep.
Okay. Okay. No, if there are no further thoughts on there, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Thank you so much for waiting, really. We're going to discuss and take action on a request from the 2020 Committee to place heritage, a heritage marker at Rings End Bridge. And I'd like to introduce Shannon Sillsby, who's the project manager for the Heritage Trail, and Al Miller, the chairman of the 2020 Bicentennial Committee, to tell us all about the Heritage Trail. And I have to say that I have seen these, and they are so terrific. They really are.
Thank you for all your work on these.
Yes, you get so much information.
Especially Shannon.
Yes. Yes. Very, well, okay, so, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, I know, though, I'm sure, remember, the 2020 Committee, Bicentennial Committee? So, even it was, even though it was the 2020 Bicentennial Committee, and we're in 2022, we still have a project that's going forward. So, this is going to be the most enduring project. It was the most ambitious project, and I think it was the most, the project that the committee is most proud of, which we call it the Darien Heritage Trail. So, you'll be happy to note that I'm not here to ask for any money. The Darien Heritage, Darien Heritage Trail is a project that's been totally funded. It's going to be a gift to the Town of Darien from the Darien Foundation. And Sarah Woodbury in here, she's the executive director. Thank you, Sarah, for all the work you've done. Executive Director of the Darien Foundation. So, for the past two years that we've been developing this, I've made a lot of presentations to various town committees and commissions, as well as during the events. We've talked about it at all of our events. And some of your colleagues that were here in, in 2019 and 2020, we talked about as well as, as well as all the other projects going forward. There was a ribbon-cutting ceremony in November of last year, which I know some of you attended. Thank you very much. For three of the markers. Those three markers, however, were all on private property, none on public property. So, we're here to talk about the ones that are going to be on town property. I'm also really to show you all the great work we've done, and Shannon especially has done, and to present you with like a final package. And there's also one of the markers that no other committee or commission has ownership of the actual site. It's not the Department of Parks and Rec, it's not the Board of Education. I talked to Planning and Zoning, and I talked to the Tax Assessor, and they said, "This is really up to the, you guys, the Board of Selectmen, to give us approval." So, that's that. So, I'd like to present Shannon Sillsby, who is the project manager of the Darien Heritage Trail, to give you the presentation.
Thank you, Al. I'm happy to pull up the deck I sent you, unless you've gotten to look at it. Okay, great. Know that we wouldn't be here without the fearless leadership of Al Miller. And we've celebrated him, and it's been my pleasure to get to know Al through this project. Know we've been guided by another amazing volunteer, Ken Reese, who is the author of this book, The Story of Darien, Connecticut, and also the historian from the Museum of Darien, as well as Karen Pollitt, who's a longtime Monuments and Ceremonies volunteer. She's retired from that committee, but this is her book, Monuments and Memorials of Darien, Connecticut. And we've really leveraged these, you know, enduring resources in developing these nine markers. So, as Al said, nine markers in total. You saw the list. We do, do number them, but you can really visit them in any order you please. Three of them went in the ground. And again, Marcy, thank you so much for joining us. I feel like it was, it was a sunny but coldish day in November, very fall. And they really are very beautiful. Connecticut Manufacturer, Connecticut Creative Art, Creative Shop as well, that, so we really kept the work in state and working with, you know, friends and neighbors. There are four markers that are on public property. So, Tilly Pond, Rings End, that we're here to talk about tonight, the Battle of the Post Road, which actually occurred right at Hindley School, which is really a very cool story. And then, the Nuroton Cemetery is the final one. But again, per Al's great preamble, it's the Rings End land that we're here to ask you for your approval to place this marker. And of course, want to give you, you know, review of that creative and the story of the Rings End Bridge in all of its iterations, wood, stone, to eventually today.
wood, stone, to eventually today, and so here tonight, to answer any questions you may have about that particular marker or any of the public markers, but in particular, any questions about us being able to, you know, put it in the ground, hopefully in May. Actually, early June. Early June, yes, early June.
The, the posts that you're using, those are consistent with all of them, right?
Exactly.
All right, okay.
And we did notice the pollinator pathway marker when we came in today, so it looks very similar. The posts and the entry into the ground's a little different, but yeah, they'll all look exactly like the first three look, with any landscaping that has to happen around the entry, it would take, we'd take care of that as well.
Okay. How'd you pick, how'd you choose that particular location?
Oh, good question.
So, the author of that book, Ken Reese, he's the historian at the Museum of Darien, he came up with a list of like fourteen historic sites, and the 2020 Committee, along with the historian of the Museum of Darien, and some other people, we'll do down to nine of the most historic sites, and the sites that were easy to get to or whatever, there are also, a lot of them are sites on the fifth grade tours, the school tours, so that had a big impact on the school's children's team, and that's basically how it came about. We got, you know, consulting the historian and the different site owners, and some people were able to read the school reports.
So we built the trail, so it is expandable, so if there are other markers that want to be added, if this body or Monuments and Ceremonies wants to add another one, it can be expanded upon. Do know as well that we did add something to the project that's not near deck, which is a mini-site, that's going to be hosted by the Museum of Darien, there's a QR code you may have seen in the bottom right-hand corner of each marker, that goes to the mini-site, and that wasn't a part of our original vision, but was a part of our vision as we got working, to allow the trail to be accessible to all, so you could be sitting in Hawaii and access the, you know, get to the Darien Heritage Trail, you could be perhaps hard of hearing or hard, you know, have a site difference and be able to listen to the oral histories or enlarge the marker. So we really wanted to drive the accessibility of the material, and if you're a teacher and you go on the field trip and you want to pull it back up in your classroom, it's right there.
Wow, you've thought of everything. Very cool.
Any other questions?
The only question I had was, I think where, for Hindley, are you going to be putting it because of the construction that I just be coming up?
Yes, we were just talking to Alan about that.
Yeah.
Do you have that picture? We have the actual picture.
That's the only thing that I was thinking about, yes.
Yep, we worked with Mr. Lynch, and we're going to follow back up with him, because we did show, and tell Alan the story of the Battle of the Post Road, which I can't wait for everyone to know about, because it's quite cool that there was a battle right there. We're going to follow up tomorrow with Mike to make sure that the Facilities Committee has given the approval, but Mike saw the creative and said, all's a go.
Yeah, no, it, it looks great, I just was curious, yeah.
But we are going to validate, Al does have a picture of where that is, it's kind of down near water, so it's not on the actual, the corner of Post, Post and near water.
Yeah, because I know they'll be using, the middle of the building is where the construction will be happening, and so I'm wondering.
He said, this is where the site should go.
That's, okay.
It's a little bit down near water lane.
Yeah, and I think, worst case, if they have to move it temporarily, they can do that, and they can put it back, you know, if that's the right spot.
All right, or we can put it, we can put it wherever.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
This is where he's sitting.
They have to bulldoze and.
Michael figure it out.
Take that, a hundred percent, if he's on it, then he's on it.
It is in cement, so we definitely, probably moving, it's not cool.
If Mr. Lynch is on it, then he knows exactly what's going on, yep.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanted to say thank you, this was a really, a terrific project that, like you said, will, will last, and future generations will be benefiting from your, from your, your history that you're providing, so thank you.
Yep, the unveilings will be probably June 10th and 11th, is what we're looking at, a Friday and a Saturday, for the, we'll make sure you get that, save the date for the unveil of the trail.
Appreciate that, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Al, another ninety-eight years, and you can do Darien three hundred years, it's going to be fantastic.
We just want to thank you for the four years that you've spent doing this, this has been much longer than anticipated.
Thank you, you all, yes, and we had one of the stars, right, John, you were.
There you go.
You can pull the wig out.
If I had, if the train had not been late, I was going to stop by and pick it up.
Were you?
He would have enjoyed that.
No, I know, I'm waiting, okay, so may I have a motion to approve the request to place a heritage marker at Rings End Bridge, please?
Yes.
Marcy moves.
Sarah seconds.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, thank you so much for coming, you're giving a presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, really, it's terrific. Okay. Next item on the agenda, may I have a motion to authorize the settlement of the LaRoe litigation as explained to the Board of Selectmen earlier? Mike moves, Marcy seconds, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request to transfer one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to legal counsel, Kate, will you explain this?
Yes. When we went to paying the most recent monthly bills, it became evident that we are going to overrun the account, so I did an estimate based on our current run rate, and I believe that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars will get us through the balance of the year. We do have a favorable balance in the Regulatory Counsel account, and I conferred with Jeremy to make sure that he was okay with the amount that I wanted to take, because they are running much better than anticipated in their account, so I'm asking you to transfer fifty from contingency and a hundred from Regulatory Counsel to general legal counsel, to get us through the end of the year.
So that should cover it through the end of June?
Yes, that is my estimate based on what I was seeing in monthly averages.
Any other questions? Okay. No other questions, may I have a motion to approve this transfer request? Marcy moves. Sarah seconds, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is for appointments, and I'm going to do each one of these separately. May I have a motion to appoint Isabel Negron to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for a term expiring on 11/30/24? And just for the record, these were all people that we interviewed earlier today. Mike moves, second. Sarah seconds, all in favor? Unanimous. May I have a motion to appoint Julie Jones to the Coastal Waters Commission for a term expiring on 12/31/22? Marcy moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. May I have a motion to appoint Chris Taylor to the Parks and Recreation Commission, pending his resignation from the RTM, for a term expiring March 31st, 2022, and a subsequent term expiring on 3/31/25? Marcy moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor? May I have a unanimous, Kate? May I have a motion to appoint Alicia Pepperone to the Beautification Commission for a term expiring on 11/30/23? Mike moves. Marcy seconds, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next item on the agenda is minutes, review and approve the minutes of the March 14th, 2022 regular meeting, are there any additions, subtractions, edits?
No, they look good to me.
Seeing none? Okay. May I have a motion to approve, as presented, all in favor?
Motion was.
Okay, Marcy moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Agenda review, are there any topics board members would like to see on future agendas? Mike?
Would it be possible, because I'm looking to get an update of the status of the Palmer property construction?
Yes. I do know that they were, that it was approved, and they're waiting for the Goddard School to be fully approved, I believe that's April 5th, but yes, we can add that to the agenda, anything else? Okay, Marcy? I'm sorry, Sarah?
It's okay. If we could have an update on the EverSource issue, I know you've been typically doing it in your report, that would be great. I would also like to respectfully ask for a discussion for this board on DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, I believe it's a meaningful discussion, working with our community and our residents, business and town leaders, possibly with a facilitator, to hear our needs. We have had antisemitic and other racist incidents in our town, we need to listen to our neighbors, our residents, who are feeling marginalized, and engage in conversations to understand what is happening and what our needs are as a town, in order for us to determine what steps we need to take to create a more inclusive and welcoming town, not only for our current residents, for the, for the new ones, as well as we look to welcome many new neighbors with building projects in town.
Thank you, Sarah, and I would like to add for an item for the agenda is, in the past, the Board of Selectmen has had a goals that they've issued, and I was thinking that, I think that we did not do that, and that could be part of our, our mission, or something to consider also. So our goals and objectives, okay.
Updating them, because I think I have, it's like 2019, right?
Are there any other items?
Kate, I guess the only question I would ask is, we started some charter review conversations a while ago.
We did.
Do we have any, like, major ones that we want to move forward, that we were working through, or no? You may need to go back, I know.
I'd have to go back and look at them, there were a number of things, but Wayne pointed out that some of the things we wanted to do were not quite as simple as we thought with the RTM, they were more major revisions.
Okay.
So I'd have to go back and take a look.
Thank you.
The only thing for me is this five o'clock discussion tomorrow, for the folks that were here today, is not on my calendar, or I've not got an invite for that, is that something that's going to be set around so that we, unless we're not supposed to?
No, it was not to be a Board of Selectmen meeting.
Ah, okay.
It has not been posted as a Board of Selectmen meeting, so basically, really, only one, one person other than Monica would be able to attend.
Okay, that's fine.
Then it's a meeting.
Because then it's a meeting, yeah.
All right, we don't want that.
Okay. But I will give a full report on it.
Okay.
Happy to. And, yes. Okay, if there are no other items, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mike moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor? Unanimous, Kate? Thank you, everyone.